Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. At this time, the school board meeting is officially called to order. At this time, if you please would stand for a moment of silence and then we'll proceed with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to tonight's meeting. The school board meeting in Madison County School Board is officially called to order. The school board meeting is an advertised meeting held in the public, not a public meeting. We have an established advertised agenda that will be followed. Anyone wishing to address the school board may do so during the public input section of the meeting. You'll have three minutes to address the board. The sign-in sheet to speak during public input is on the table to the left as you enter the boardroom. Please sign in if you wish to speak. Our school board minutes are being recorded this evening by Ms. Bishop, Confidential Secretary and Secretary of the Superintendent. Board members present are Ms. Williamson, Mr. Carroll, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Bell, and myself, Bart Alford. Our attorney, Mr. Reeves, is present, and the Superintendent, Ms. Joseph, is present. We also are being recorded, for anyone in the audience to make them aware, we are being recorded this evening. So at this time, the meeting is officially called to order. I am making an amendment to the agenda. 2.1, the English Language Learning Plan will be moved to 5.11. So 2.1 is being moved to 5.11, English Language Learners Plan, ELL Plan. Are there any questions or concern about the amendment?
No, she already planned.
Okay, if there's none, we will go to the...
Ms. Alford.
Yes, ma'am.
5.1.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Joseph, just remind me, 5.1, the IT update with Mr. Goyette is being pulled to the next Forgot about it, I had it marked and just forgot. So 5.1 is being pulled and 2.1 is being added to 5.11, the English Language Learners Plan. Okay, under the consent items, we have 4.1, the minutes from the August the 1st meeting and the August the 1st Truth and Milage Meeting. 4.2, the revision to the calendar. 4.3, the fundraisers at Madison County High School. You have the volleyball team is having a T-shirt sale Monday, August the 8th through August the 18th. It will pay for uniforms and they're also having a banner sponsorship. At Madison County High School, the band is having a fundraiser with band merchandise, 8:15 through September the 2nd, and it's for the band program. Also at Madison County High School, the FFA will be selling meat sticks at FFA functions and online throughout the year for the state and national convention. 4.4 is the fall sports schedule. At Madison County Central School, you have the football schedule, the volleyball schedule. At Madison County High School, you have the golf, the varsity and JV football schedule, the volleyball schedule included. So those were the consent items. Is there a motion to accept the consent items?
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Is there any discussion?
It's the...I know the homecoming changed, is that a student holiday or not?
Okay, on that calendar that you just...
It is, okay.
Okay.
I know the other one was, but it didn't say this one was, so I just...
Okay, the 14th, it was a student holiday, students will attend school that day before it did the...
Right, right. It just switched to that.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, are there any other questions? If there are no other questions, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. The next item, 5.1, has been pulled for the evening. 5.2, the update on district HVAC improvements, Mr. Guin.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Just wanted to give y'all a quick summary on what has all been going on. Since June of '21 is when all this HVAC replacement project has started, that's when the equipment was ordered. We started getting equipment in in December of '21 and started installing it also in that month. Maintenance has worked very closely with our HVAC contractors all through these projects. We've got all the outline schools done, starting with Lee. We had 18 DX AC units replaced, that's classroom units, that's the split unit like senior home. We replaced the walk-in cooler and the walk-in freezer units at the Lee Elementary. Greenville Elementary, we've done 17 DX units, got all the classrooms, offices, lunchrooms, and we had one walk-in cooler and one walk-in freezer.
Where was that, Mr. Guin?
That was in Greenville.
Greenville.
Yes, sir. And Pineapple, we had 14 DX units, one walk-in cooler, one walk-in freezer. And then came the summer, we jumped on Central. There was a host of projects going on during the summer, this summer, with thank y'all for approving the funding for these projects to happen. Central School, we had 74 DX units replaced over the summer in this two-month period. We had two walk-in freezers, one walk-in cooler, four buildings professionally covered clean, completely built, complete buildings, four buildings painted in every classroom, every bathroom, and connecting hallway in between the classrooms on four buildings. We had a repaint, painted the doors at Central, we had those repainted, or not Central, at Greenville, and we replaced carpet at Pineapple, five classrooms and the office area. As you can see, keep in mind, all of these units that were replaced at Central, half of those units was over the top of your head in the classrooms. So all those units had to be put overhead, along with the part of it that goes outside. So it's been quite an ordeal. And keep in mind, the Lee, Greenville, and Pineapple project before was all done during weekends, on Thanksgivens, Christmas holidays, with minimal disruption to any classes. The only other project that's kind of outstanding right now, and it's a big one, is Central's gym. We've got to have that floor replaced. My last communication with the contractor, the insurance companies that's replacing it, is the manufacturer is supposed to be manufacturing that floor this month. They manufacture them as they're needed, as they're put in. So we're supposed to have a ship date sometime this month for that floor to come in. Once it's here, it's a two-month process on replacing that floor, with all the bleachers has got to be moved, floors has got to be tore out, put back down, and there's a lot of logistics that's got to happen for that floor to be replaced, so... But hopefully, by, in two months down the road, we're looking at a brand-new gym floor. That's my prayers anyway. I know it's going to be a little disruption for some of our sports programs, but I think we've got with all the coaches and all, and we've worked around trying to share the high school gym with them, so I think we're going to be all right.
Is that where volleyball is going to play at the high school?
Everything will be at the high school. Then we go into basketball season, we'll start in the basketball season probably by the, or at least practice.
Right.
And they'll just have to share.
Share.
Because I don't recommend any practice happening on Central's gym floor. It's a big liability if somebody were to get hurt.
Yep.
On our part. So I, you know, I kind of limit it to assemblies and no sport facilities. Any questions?
I want to thank you for all that's been done, and just remind the board and everyone listening that this was paid through...
Most of it was Esser.
Esser, and again, we're looking at millions of dollars here in renovations.
Yes, this was all equipment that was R-22 refrigerant that they're phasing out. We replaced it now with the 410A, more efficient refrigerant units, and we should even start seeing some savings within the school as far as inventory goes.
If you think about most of Central, Lee, Pineapple, Greenville, were all redone about the same time, so...
Those are 96, 97 model schools.
Yeah, yeah.
Their warranty on all them things?
The warranty is, they're one-year workmanship as far as installation. Compressor's has got five-year warranties on them, so that pretty much standard.
That's the, that's the most expensive anything.
Yes, that compressor, that's the heart of the system, yes, sir.
Thank you very much for that, for all you're doing.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all, glad to tell them I'll give you the funding to do it.
Okay, the next item, 5.3, is the approval of the HVAC upgrade at the bridge program. One unit is $7,982 a unit. For all six, it was $47,892.
Yes, this is a, Bridge did not get, I did not include it in any of the bidding with the Esser to start off with. Looks like we're going to continue to have to use the Bridge program out there in the building that it's housed in. Those units were put in when originally I could remember this, I was hired in '08. So they're getting some aid on them, and they're the old wall home bar units, and they're, the official rating on them are terrible. We're, we've had trouble, we've done a lot of work on, worked with Mr. Raynack, and she has found some funding into the 2021 LCI that we can use, if y'all could grant me that, that'll give us the opportunity to replace those also.
Do you have to get bids on that, or can you just piggyback with the high school?
I have three, three quotes already on that, yes, ma'am.
Jason's heating was the lowest bid at $7,982 a unit, with a total of $47,892.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, we're replacing all six units?
We can replace, according to Jason, and he said we can place as many or all, he said that's entirely up to us at this point.
What do you have the money for, Ms. Raynack?
We talked about $48,000, $49,000.
Okay, okay. Is there a motion to approve to replace all six units?
I move to approve all six.
And the low bid, the Jason heating and air.
With Jason heating and air.
Yes. Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll to replace all six units with Jason's heating and air as the company that's replacing the units. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Williamson. Is there any discussion?
When will he get started on that?
We're at the mercy of the equipment. Soon as we can get a secure equipment, then he said he can get started on it, so hopefully that's not... But if the equipment's getting easier to come by, so hopefully we can get that equipment for a quick.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Williamson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the HVAC upgrade and bridge program.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Guin. 5.4, staff travel. The first item, the ECTAC Family Engagement Conference, it's through Title I. Ms. Howard will be attending. The cost is around $600, it's a DOE presentation on family engagement, grant awards, Title I Part A information, roll forward information in charter schools. The next staff travel is the Annual Assessment and Accountability Meeting. This is coming from the General Fund, it's in Orlando, Florida. Ms. Thomas will be attending, it's around $600, and this conference is assessment information, and that's essential where we're at right now with rolling out the new FAST and how that's coming about. So although it's coming from the General Fund, it's something that she needs to go to, or the district needs her to go there. Is there a motion to approve the staff travel?
I move to approve the staff travel.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell, is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the staff travel, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the staff travel. 5.5, personnel changes, Mr. Killensworth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If we would, we have, as far as instructional recommendations, we have three that are listed there, and what is happening is Ms. Postel is taking the place of Ms. Thomas in that first part, because due to having to stay out for a period of time, that's what's going to cover that part. So that's why you see that. On the non-instructional recommendations, of course, we have four that we're asking to bring, and then as far as transfers, we have five there, one of them being a switch with Bridge in the high school, and the bottom four being due to adjustment with BSI. And then employee requesting leave of absence, on that one, the first one, Ms. Presley, I ask that you please remove her name. We were able to work out something there, we're able to Skype her stuff in, so please remove her name.
And who was that, then?
Ms. Presley, Glendale Presley. And then the bottom as far as resignation or termination, really, there's only one is at top, and the bottom four is some cleaning up that needed to be done from some of them wafer. And that is all on that sheet, and then the second page are, of course, substitute teachers, food service, bus drivers, and custodians, seeing that, you know, we brought back the stuff from Kelly Service. I ask that y'all approve that if you would, please.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations and the substitute approvals?
I'll make the motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion?
When you, you have one down there that said no show, that they just didn't show up?
He actually came and went to do his fingerprints and stuff, but ended up taking a job in another county.
Did he not call?
Yeah, he came and did his fingerprints.
I know, but did he not call or that it wasn't?
The bottom line is, he got a job closer to his house, so he took it. I mean, that's, at the end of the day, that's what the deal is.
But did he tell us, or just didn't come?
Well, after the fact, you know, after we started having to dig in on it.
Yeah, when you say...
We had him marked coming here, and then he backed...
Decline, does that mean they were, had a contract, or they...
They were, we had them up to come, and then they chose, for whatever reason, to not uphold it.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all those in favor of the personnel changes, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Killensworth. 5.6, permission to advertise the code of student conduct.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to request that we advertise the code of conduct with the changes made for this school year.
At this time, are there any questions concerning the code of conduct and the endowment to the code of conduct?
What was the main?
Yeah, that's what I was, I think the public would like a little explanation of that.
The main change in the code of conduct was basically wording. With our new MTSS system, most of the classroom, referred to classroom behaviors are handled in the classroom, and by the time it gets to the referral process, it's at the administration. So the code of conduct reflects first offense after classroom interventions have been handled. So when they get to the administration, it's already assumed that interventions have been taken place in the classroom and that this is, it's now a referral, because we've already gone through steps one, two, and three, so to speak, in the classroom. That's the biggest, the biggest change. So consequences will reflect as such.
So that, once it gets to the administration part, that they're going to have three chances.
Right.
Pretty much.
I mean, it depends on the violation.
Right, depends on the offense.
Yeah.
And then the endowment is for the bridge program.
We're just putting procedures in place and words.
Mr. Chair, one other thing that I would like to do in regards to the student code of conduct, I would like to add it to next, our next meeting, which is September 6th, in case we want some open discussion before we vote on it, so that'll give us some other time, rather than having a separate workshop at our next meeting, it will be on the agenda, we need to do some discussion, updates.
I like that, because we've got to get this perfectly clear for everyone to understand what's, what the repercussions are and how we should do things.
Okay, is there a motion to advertise, or permission to advertise in a motion, the code of student conduct?
I move to grant permission to advertise the code of student conduct.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Is there any discussion?
So we're going to have it on the next meeting, and then the public hearing will be the following.
Yes.
So it'll actually be coming back to y'all, to the two more times.
Yes. The meeting, we won't vote until the 19th, but just in case, we normally have a workshop, a separate meeting for a workshop, and this eliminates the need for a separate workshop by putting it back on next meeting's agenda.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Bell. All those in favor of permission to advertise the code of student conduct, five oh, Ms. Bishop, for permission to advertise the code of student conduct. 5.7, threat assessment and mental health software, Mr. Williams.
If you've been following DOE and Stoneman Douglas and the whole nine, a lot of money has been put into mental health and threat assessment. State requires us to have threat assessment teams at each school, and they go through the threat assessment training. What happens is when a student does something that activates a threat, because if he makes a threat, if he does something that's dangerous on the school, then the school administration has to have a threat assessment meeting. There's a form, that's about 20 pages, called a C-STACK form, that the Department of Education requires us to use. What happens is, you use those forms, and over the course of the year, they stack up, and you can imagine the amount of paperwork. So what we're asking is that we use a software called Navigate 3000, which will help us keep track of the threat assessment meetings that we're having, and make sure that we're putting interventions in place for those kids that need interventions, and we are able to follow through. So if there's a kid that comes before the meeting, the team, and they have a threat assessment meeting on that kid, he doesn't get forgotten, because the software will alert that we haven't followed up on this student. We haven't checked in on the student, and make sure the interventions have been put in place to make sure that everything is okay with the student. So you'll see there's three different bids that we went through. Navigate 360 was the best, in terms of annual subscription and initial upfront fee. Not only that, it's pretty much backed by what DOE uses, and it's pretty user-friendly.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And so that's, it's not the low bid, but your recommendation is it's the best bid?
Yes.
Okay, and can you give the board some, you know, why is it better?
If you look on the handout, the lowest bid is, it didn't give us a whole lot of, a whole lot of things to do, we couldn't track the interventions through the crisis go, but with Navigate 360, we're able to do all the things that I just mentioned, we're able to track individual cases, fill reports, make sure interventions have been put in place, and they'll provide training for what, for what the people would need to do to use it. Also, in the future, we could possibly add on to Navigate 360 when we start doing reunification projects on software.
Okay, and this is going to be paid for by the...
The mental health allocation. Yes, ma'am.
And it's 50 to 80 a year for this subscription?
Yes, ma'am.
Or is it, okay, because I see this 14,460, that was something different.
Yeah, it's a different company.
That's a different company, okay.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I got you.
On the back, yeah, LEAP is a hanging subscription that we just renewed, because our students, grade 6 through 12, have to have five hours of social-emotional training.
Oh.
So LEAP is what we use, what we've been using, so it's just a renewal.
Is that something the teachers teach, or it's...
It is a lesson that teachers will teach, and the kids will go through, yes, ma'am.
For 6 through 12, I see.
Yes, ma'am.
Who's teaching it?
However, however the school administration decides to, right.
Is that included also in our, in this? Is the LEAPs also included?
And the mental health allocation, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
But is it...
It's two separate purchases.
It's two separate, yeah.
Yeah, okay. You need a motion to second on to accept the Navigate 360.
Okay, so this, this motion is for the Navigate 360. Is there a motion to approve the threat assessment? Is there a motion to approve the, um, threat assessment and mental health software?
I move to approve the threat assessment and mental health software that Navigate 2, 360.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson.
And so, Mr. Chairman, since that's not your low, you're, you're free to award it that, uh, to, other than the low bid, but you have to have a reason set out in the minutes. And so I, I think the, um, uh, I think Mr. Williams has said it's a, it's a, that he feels it's better and, and, uh, better for our purposes and all that.
So do I need, so do I need, uh, uh-
That, that needs to be set out in your motion.
In the motion.
The reason we're not, uh, doing the low bid.
The re, okay. I move to approve the threat assessment and mental health software, Navigate 360, although it's not the lowest bid. But
It's got special abilities.
Navigate 360 has the most abilities to, for our students and our staff.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, show a hand please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, um, The next item is the leaps program, or the leaps company, for a fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollar subscription. Is that?
I think we're approving payment, payment for the annual subscription fee.
Yeah. Just continuation of-
Okay. Um, this is used to satisfy the, um, social, emotional learning mandate for middle and high school students. Is there a motion to approve the leaps company for an annual subscription of fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars?
Yes, I, I move to approve the leaps company, the program, for fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, actually renewing the subscription.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, show a hand please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the leaps, um, company for the annual subscription of fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars.
What is the name of the program? Leaps?
Leaps.
It is leaps, okay, so that's the name of the program?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because we're saying-
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next item we have on the agenda is, um, parking at the football game, and I think we have Coach Harris here tonight to, um, update us on this.
Sorry, guys, I came straight from practice, so I'm a little underdressed, but, uh, I hope that's okay. We are, uh, asking for, again, to have parking again this year at the football games. I know it's been a hot topic, uh, but I think it's something that's beneficial for the high school. Last year, uh, they were able to bring in, uh, through parking, fourteen thousand, um, not, one hundred and ninety-two dollars, uh, is what they made on the parking. Um, before I got here, uh, there was four thousand dollars spent. Um, I'm not exactly positive on all of the way that it was spent, but I, as I look at it, it's been, uh, a lot of it was startup change for some of the games that, uh, went back into the, into the, uh, account, back into the football account as, as it, as it went. And also, uh, they upgraded some graphics on the, that had gotten damaged on the fieldhouse, some of the graphics had been damaged and, and done. Since I've gotten here, uh, we have used, uh, a portion of that, uh, thirty-eight hundred dollars, uh, to treat all of the athletic fields at the high school. So the football field, uh, the practice field, the baseball field, and the softball field, all were treated with Top Choice. Uh, and I know you're probably not familiar with what Top Choice is, but it is a granule, um, that is guaranteed to keep, uh, fire ants and mold crickets, which we had an abundance of, uh, and army worms off of the fields for a year. So it's a one-year treatment, so it's a treatment at the, a year. Uh, I know it's, it's, uh, right now, any kind of, uh, pesticide or, um, uh, anything that you put on the field right now, fertilizers are astronomically higher than they have been in the past, uh, but we were able to get that done. That was something that really needed to be done. If you've gone out to the football field lately, you will see a huge difference in what had happened. It was a, or, it kinda had an orange look to it, and that's a, uh, that's a sign of the mold crickets. And we had gone out and, uh, uh, gone to the baseball field and the softball field and the football field, and if you mix up some Dawn liquid detergent, just so if you ever want to know this, with some water and pour it on the area, the mold crickets will come up, and we had mold crickets in all three fields. So we thought it was a good use of the funds, uh, since they are used for facilities, uh, to use that for that thirty-eight hundred dollars. That left us with a balance of three thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, so that is the balance right now in that account. Now, we have, we have, uh, looked at, uh, three areas that we feel like are the biggest need in facilities, in the football area, softball area, and baseball area, and those three areas that we feel like are the track, the bathrooms, and the tennis courts. And of those three, we feel like the tennis courts are in the most need of help. And so the money that would be, uh, collected this year would, uh, the majority of it, not all of it, we're gonna still try to treat some of the fields with some of the stuff, but the majority of it would go, uh, then to the tennis courts and refurbishing the tennis courts. Now, we have gotten a quote, uh, uh, when I first got here, uh, we, we got a quote, uh, to refurbish that tennis court. Um, if you've been out there, of course, it needs a little bit of work. Uh, I've also talked to Tim Ginn today, and, uh, he had another quote of just tearing the whole facility up, crushing it up and repaving it. Uh, that's gonna run somewhere in the six-figure range. Uh, the other one that we've gotten a quote for that redid, uh, which goes in, it fills in the cracks, all the cracks in the, uh, in the concrete, and resurfaces, repaints, and does all that kinda stuff, is about fifty-four thousand. Now, there's no way possible that we're gonna raise fifty-four thousand dollars through our parking this year, uh, but this is an opportunity for us to start to try to, uh, uh, work towards that goal of, of raising that money, uh, to refurbish that tennis court. Maybe we can figure out another way in which we can find some funds to help that and, uh, help those kids that are able to go and play tennis. So that's kind of our idea. We're trying to, trying to earmark at least ten thousand. I'm a little concerned about how much money we will actually raise this year, because we only have five home games instead of the six or the seven that they had last year. So, uh, it could be a little bit different as far as what we bring in. But we would keep it the same at five dollars, um, and, uh, and, and of course, uh, all of our athletes and band members and all of those folks will get, uh, their, their tickets to get into the game. Uh, we will not charge our student athletes, uh, or extracurricular activities for, for being there. Uh, we will continue to use, uh, the, uh, uh, basketball team and the agricultural team to help with the parking, and, uh, they will get monetary help through that, okay? So that's, that's our proposal. Um, I, I think it's, uh, very beneficial. Uh, I, I've only been here, you know, for a very short time, uh, but where I come from, we all did parking. Um, and so, uh, uh, teams that come up, traveled up, like, our guys never complained about it, because they were so used to it down there, everybody does parking. Uh, because we have to, somehow or another, guys, we've gotta figure out a way to, uh, start to put some money back into these, uh, uh, facilities, or else those facilities will crumble, as we know.
Okay, um, thank you. It's, um, good to see it spelled out what you're planning to do with the money. The, the track, bathrooms, and tennis courts are all areas of great need. I wanna say the tennis court, for, and looking back, I, I wanna say that it was close to a million dollars for the track and the tennis court to be redone, because the track's gonna have to be, and engineers gonna have to come in and do it out. And the tennis court, I wanna say, was at least three or four hundred thousand to have it redone. So, I mean, the fifty-four thousand is great to have it resurface, that's still a lot of money, but, um, at some point, we're gonna have to do something to redo it, either that or start cutting programs, because it's almost getting to the point where, safety-wise, you can't have people on the tennis court. I mean,
Amen.
They're gonna, I mean, they're, I think they're gonna be lucky to get through this season with the, um, in the spring, with how the divots are and the baseline and just all around, I mean, but anyway, um, I, I know that, I know last year, I think we had, Ms. Joseph was saying that we gave out tickets, um, as people parked. We gave out tickets and kept up with the number of tickets that were given to have a way to, um, validate how much money we had taken up. Um, if people were to ask, and I, I think that's a really good idea, if we choose to do that, that that continues to where we have a way of saying to the public that, based on our ticket sales, we had a thousand people parked, we should have a thousand, five thousand dollars.
Yes, and that, and we plan on still doing that.
That's good. Also, the auditors, they want us to have something in place to be able to track our money.
Yes, ma'am.
And we just can't have money that you can't track.
And I, I spoke to, um, our auditor today concerning this, just with some ideas, and I, I wa, I was not aware, to be honest, that we were giving out tickets last year, um, which we were, so that's good. We, we need to continue doing that, just to be able to prove how many we've, we've taken up. Again, that's, that's my only concern with, uh, with taking up the money, is that we, we have something we're showing that we're doing with it, that's gonna benefit the students, and, um, something that would be above and beyond of what maybe we could do as a board. And, and I'll be honest, um, we've sat up here and wondered where we're getting the money from to do the track and the tennis court. That's, I mean-
And that's a, that's a, that's a tricky question, and you, and as well as you know. And so, you know, that's, uh, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard decision, but somewhere along the way, we're gonna have to figure it out, whether we have to go, uh, to our constituents or, or whatever we have to do, but that's a lot of money. You know, I don't, I don't know that we're gonna find one person to donate, uh, that amount of money.
No.
And, and so, you know, there's a lot that, that needs to happen in our facilities. We're gonna work our Everloving Fannies Office coaches, and I have great coaches that do that, you know, Coach Repogle, Coach, uh, they all, uh, they all work out there. I, I see them all the time, uh, you know, I, my coaches are great. We cut the fields at the, at the high school, they do all the stuff. We've been fertilizing, we've been doing all that kinda stuff, but only so much that you can do, as you know. We had the workday, and I had, we had over a hundred and forty people out there working, and, and that was phenomenal, because we were able to, to edge the track. We were able to, I don't know if you've been to the stadium, but you need to go up there and look at it, because Extreme Detailing came out and donated their time, and they put some, uh, some aluminum refresh on it, it looks like a brand-new stadium, and, and that was all donated. And so, uh, you know, we're trying to do the best that we can to, to, uh, make our facilities the best that we can have them. Uh, but eventually, we're gonna have to, to, to take that next step and, and, and spend some money, and, and getting that money and, and figuring out where it's gonna come from is something that we're gonna have to work hand-in-hand with, and, um, I'll be glad to do, do my part of whatever I need to do as well.
Okay, yeah, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a big, um, a lot of problem solving to come up with that amount, but, um, does anyone else have any questions or comments or concerns?
I've, I've got concerns about, I've said it every year, that we are, to my fellow board members, we are the poorest county in the state of Florida. We, and I know, and I've said it before, five dollars doesn't mean much to me, but it means something to a lot of people. Okay, um, it's nice, this sounds good. I haven't s, I have been approached by different people about where is the money going? And that was very, I've asked about it, I've heard it's been put in a big pot. I haven't got a specific how much money and where it went. Okay, now you have come up with different, you know, things here, and, and you said you wanted to take care of tennis courts, which there's been no money put into the tennis courts. I know what they look like, I've been out there, and it just, it bothers me that we're paying people to come on our property. The taxpayers, they're paying for the schools and the property, and we're saying, you have to pay to come here.
And, and that, we, we wouldn't have to if, if you wanted to totally fund the athletic programs, but right now, that's not happening. And so we, we've gotta have funds to run our athletic programs, and it takes a lot of money to run athletic programs.
Well, they've been running it before these past two or three years.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I mean, it's, in other words, they're not really depending on this fourteen thousand to run it, I wouldn't think. But it, that's just my opinion. Now, I'm, I'm all for the sports, I, I sponsor them, I, you know, I'm not downing it. I, I appreciate what you do and all the coaches do, but I cannot support charging people to come on the property. That just goes against my grain. I just-
One, um, one thing that is, um, maybe a little bit easier for some people to swallow in this, is that other sports are benefiting from, like you said, with the lawn. I don't know that that's, I mean, maybe it has been done before, but, uh, we haven't heard that before.
No, I haven't heard. What other sports benefit it?
Like basketball and softball.
Softball and baseball, with them spraying the fields.
Okay.
That, that he recently did, I mean, that-
Yeah, that was thirty-eight hundred dollars that we spent out of that account. Uh, you know, we, we want all of our facilities to be nice, we want all of our programs to be successful. It's not about, just about football. I'm up here as the athletic director, not as the football coach. Um, I, I just see a benefit in this, uh, uh, being able to, um, help out some of the other sports and help out some of our facilities that we don't have earmarked funds for. Um, and so, you know, I told, uh, I told Ms. Goose, she came to me, asked me, and I said, I will fight for whatever I can fight and try to get it to, as, as much as I can get it with, and this is a way that I see that we can possibly help her out. Uh, you know, it might not be everything that she needs, but it's, it's a step in the right direction. Um, and, you know, we can figure out some of the other ways in which to do it, uh, you know, but, but here is a way to generate it. Um, and, and I get it, I, I understand parents are taxed, and, uh, but, I mean, we take, we take pretty, pretty good care of our kids, you know, in our programs. Um, we don't ask for a whole lot from parents, uh, as far as monetarily, uh, and, and this is a way for them to give back, uh, to their kids. And, and, and it's not just them. I mean, I'm looking here, I, and I just, I hope you don't mind, but, I mean, we, we, we got a thousand dollars from the visitors on nine twenty-seven. We got a thousand dollars, almost a thousand dollars on ten-four, uh, from the visitors, uh, not just from the, from the, uh, our, our people. Uh, we were able to get, uh, on ten twelve, thirteen hundred dollars from the visitor parking. Um, again, on ten twenty-six, we got thirteen hundred dollars from the visitors. Um, and then on the fifteenth, uh, which was the first playoff game, we got seven hundred and fifty from the visitor's side. So, I mean, I know we're looking at the fourteen thousand, but it's not coming just from our people, it's coming from the visitors as well. So it's a way in which to, to, to generate some money from our visitors that are coming as well.
I'm, I think that's wonderful. I've also checked around the different counties to see what's, and it may have been due on where you come from, where you came from.
Yes, ma'am.
But they're not charging to get into games, unless something's happened, you know, since I've last checked. I mean, not to get into games, to park at the games.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I tell you this, I've, I've been coaching for eighteen years, and as a head coach, and pretty much twenty-three as a coach, pretty much everywhere we go, uh, I, we, we, people are charging for parking.
I know when I, I know when I go to Lake City, they, they, you pay to park.
Yes, most, most places I know of charge for parking. There might be a few, a handful that do not still, but pretty much, most places that you go are gonna charge you for parking.
And it's five dollars per vehicle.
And it's five dollars per vehicle.
But I look, I look at it as a fundraiser for athletics, not football.
Yes.
Athletics, as a fundraiser, instead of having to go uptown and, and ask
The same people that we ask every time.
For their money all the time. I just look at it as a fundraiser for them.
I mean, almost half-
And, you know, I know basketball, uh,
Yes.
They, they work the gate, work the thing.
And this is a good fundraiser for basketball. They get two hundred dollars a game, and then it does help fund their basketball program. Um, and that comes right off the top of it to start with before anything else is gone, so it's also a fundraiser for the basketball team. And, and you're, and you, and, and truthfully, you're looking at maybe not half, but, uh, at least forty percent of the, the funds are generated from the other, from the other spectators, from the other teams.
I don't think the parents have a problem with, um, paying for parking, as long as they know that the money is gonna benefit the program.
We just need to be very explicit of what it's gonna use for.
And transparent. We wanna be transparent. We don't want people to guess what we're doing, and that's something we never wanna be.
I think that's one of my problems. I've, I've, I've been asked about it, and I could not nail down the information.
Well, you could say this year is going to Ms. Goose for the, for the tennis, that's what, that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
I, I think, and, and, and maybe even voluntary, you know, well, whatever, I mean, I'm just expressing my opinion on this.
Yes, ma'am.
I just feel like I have a problem charging to people to come to our schools, which we want to encourage people to come to the schools.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I've had my say.
Well, a lot of schools charge their athletes to play the sport.
Yes, we had activity, we had an activity fee in, in Ocala, in Marion County, and, um, and it's a thank, thank the Lord that we don't have it here. So, our kids had to pay to play.
Just so much a sport.
Yes, it was eighty-five dollars to play football, it was fifty dollars for every other sport. So, uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, thank God we don't do that here and, um, and it's a blessing to not do that. And part of it is we get able, we're able to do stuff like this.
And I, and I don't know that we cut, do we, I mean, if you go out for, say, football or your playing.
You, you make the team. There's no, there's no cutting in football. Uh, if you're able to stick it out and make it, then you, then you make it. Some of our other sports, however, do have to cut because there are, and, and just so you know, it's not always because the coaches don't wanna keep as many as they can, but, but you only have a certain amount of players that you can ta- have on a, on a playoff roster. So, uh, there's no way that you can keep more than what you have on that playoff roster.
And, and you know, to go back, just to touch a little bit base concerning the track and the tennis court and the bathrooms, back when the high school was renovated in fifteen, that was on the master plan to do it at that time with the fifteen million dollar renovation. Things happened inside where money was used up and, and it didn't get to that unfortunately because that would've been the time that...
Yes.
The track and bathrooms and tennis courts would've been great to, to have been worked into that. Um, the bathrooms, if I remember correctly, there's some issues with...
Well, I, I tell you what, our...
Needed to be redone.
We had, uh, they do, they still need to be redone, but our, our maintenance department, uh, Tim Ginn and his guys have gone through there and fixed a lot of the toilets and things that have, that were kinda messed up. We, during our workday, our guys went in and pressure washed all of the bathrooms. And so, uh, they are, they, they have been put, a Band-Aid has been put on them.
Right.
Uh, but they are definitely not fixed and we still need to, to get in there and fix those.
And if you, if you think about it, I think the football field was open or started in eighty or eighty-one, that's a long time to, I'm sure a lot of that's original, that's in the concession stand and...
If, if we're doing the tickets so that we can track how much is taken in, can we get a report periodically of how much you have, what's been spent and who it was spent with?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we can work on all of that. That'll have to go through Ms. Pride at the, at the office, um, but she does a great job of keeping track of all the records. That's where I got all this from.
I'm sure she does, but we never see that.
So, uh, I will come back and, uh, possibly we'll get back with you, maybe, uh, early, early after, uh, after football season's over with, let you know a recap of what it was, how much we made, uh, where we're sitting, what we're looking at spending, uh, how we can, uh, adjust all of that stuff.
Now, did this money go into a separate account?
It goes into its own account. Uh, it is...
That's not what I was told. I was told it went into a big pile.
It goes into the athletic, uh, internal athletic account, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. But it is earmarked.
But it's earmarked for the...
It is earmarked so we can find out where it is.
So, so the, um, goal this upcoming year is, well, the three things that are on the horizon, the track, bathrooms and tennis court and the tennis courts, have we looked at this?
Tennis court is the priority. So, that is the, that is the one that has been circled. Uh, and that's the one we're trying to work on. And, uh, I told her I'd work on some other avenues, but right now, um, that's where we're gonna spend this money. Um, we will try to keep a little bit for field maintenance for all of the athletic fields up there. Um, I mean, we had to come in and we were blessed, somebody donated some sand. Uh, we put, uh, four dump truck loads of sand on the football field, uh, and, uh, the, the golf course was great enough to come out and donate, uh, somebody to come spread it for us and a spreader. And we were able to spread that on the football field to try to fill in a lot of the holes, um, that were on the field. And so, uh, we did a lot of field maintenance with that. Uh, but there are other things that baseball and softball will need before their season comes as far as, uh, and it won't be a super big expense, but I do want to help them with fertilizer and things like that that they're gonna need before their season starts.
We, um, I wanna say we had looked at that concerning like grants and all for the tennis courts, but a lot of those grants has to be open to the public and we would have to have a separate entry where the public could come in. And something we were looking at back and, and that was some of the drawbacks.
It was the, um, Ina Thompson had a grant with, uh, some, something Tennis Association, but it had to be open to the public. And so, the...
Has to be open to the public twenty-four seven or just certain times?
Um, I don't remember those details, but it, it couldn't be closed for weeks at a time. I mean, you, you couldn't have it closed all day, every day, which is what...
What if you, uh, what if we revisited maybe something like that and maybe talked about a time, like a specific time that it could be open?
I, I think for that grant though, it was, it was a pretty...
It was a good bit of time it had to be.
It had to be, there was cut and dry when you had to open it. You can't have people coming on campus when students are there.
Kids are there.
And it was enough money, I think, that you could've done brand-new tennis courts. So, the, the idea was, well, gosh, if you're gonna do brand-new tennis courts, why don't you do them like you say at the county rec park?
Yeah.
Right? And then the, and then they can be open during the day, but then you could have an agreement with the county that the kids would have first priority on them whenever they needed to practice.
That's a great idea.
All of that. But it, you know, it ju- it never went further than that.
Much like, um, I don't know, when I was growing up, you're, you may be too young to remember that there were courts at the college and that's what was used when I was in high school.
Yes.
And those tennis courts weren't built, I graduated in eighty-eight, they weren't built then, so, um...
At the high school?
At the high school. We used the ones at North Florida. And since then, those have been, um, demolished. And so, those are really the only, I think there's two out at the rec park, but that wouldn't be enough to play on for a match or for a school to play against another. There's some pickleball court.
Well, the convenience of it being there is, is, is big, but the county rec park is just right there. So, I mean, that, that could, that could be a, definitely a possibility. Maybe that's something that we can look into as well.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Harris?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve, um, the parking at the football games for five dollars a vehicle to park?
I'm, I move to approve the parking at the football games.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Miss Bell. Any further discussion? If there's none, all those in favor of the parking, show a hand please. Opposed? Okay, I'm four one, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the parking for the football games.
So, that's charging for varsity football games on the...
Yes, varsity games only, that will be the only thing that will be charged. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Harris, I have this, if you don't mind taking it, please, for the, Mr. Flott. If you can give that to the office smart, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, the next one, field trips. Um, okay, let's see here. Um, the first trip is the FFA Leadership Training, September the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two in High Springs, um, Florida. Or the first one. The second is the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, October the twenty-fifth through the thirty-first. And the third is the FFA Forestry District in Branford, Florida, October the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Fourth one.
There's...
September eighth and nine in Embassy Suites, Lake Buena Vista.
Okay. Okay, and, let me, excuse me just for a second. Um, the fourth one is Madison County Hospital FFA, um, destination, um, Lake Buena Vista, um, the Embassy Suites, um, in Kissimmee, um, September the eighth through the ninth. It's an overnight trip. Um, it's a chapter president's conference. Um, there's one van and two students and one chaperone going. Okay, is there a motion to approve the, um, trips?
I move to approve the field trips.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Carroll. Okay, any discussion? Okay, if there's none, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, um, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, five point ten, um, Annette Bus Line, um, to have access to the campus, oops, just went out, to have access, um, to come into Central School to pick up some students that are there who are going to, um, Creative Arts. It's like a bus stop, I guess, is what it's being used as.
Mr. Chairperson, what they are doing, they would like to do, they would like to come on our campus and use the central school as a student pickup. We have staff, there's students attending Madison Creative Arts Academy, and they, the staff has to be to work at a certain time. And I don't know what time they drop off at Creative Arts, but they're coming, they are in that bus lines providing transportation for the Creative Arts. And I was talking with their attorney, do we need permission for their bus to come on campus and pick ours, pick up students?
So, so they're not, excuse me, I can't talk today. They're not students that we got to school, they're there with their parent.
Their parents bring them to work with them.
And so, they're getting them actually from their parent, not from us.
Yes, that's true.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, I, if I may...
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I don't think you're required to allow that. I think you are free to allow that if you would like. Um, if, if you're going to have, uh, an entity like Annette Bus Lines coming on, uh, your campus, I think you probably want to, uh, make sure that you're an additional insured on their insurance policy, uh, in case they come on. They would be a, basically a business entity coming on, doing business on your campus. Um, and, uh, but like I said, you don't, you're, I, I don't know of anything that would require you to allow this, but neither are you prohibited from doing this. I mean, it's just up to what you, uh, five board members wish to allow. But if you do choose to allow it, I would require them, make you an additional insured on their insurance policy.
And the pickup location is in the special trans line. They're not in our regular bus pickup or drop-off line, so the kids will not get one bus confused with the other bus because all of them look alike. And so, when we drop off and pick up special trans students, that's where they will be going, dropping off and picking up, dropping off and picking up.
I don't, I don't have a, I mean, I don't see a problem with it myself.
What are you saying, that we need to ask them for, Mr. Williams, an additional insured?
Um, that the district needs to be an additional insured on their liability policy. They would have to have, I assume, a million-dollar coverage, liability policy.
The Annette lines.
And then we would be an additional insured. And the point of that is if something happens, their insurance company would, uh, have to defend it and all of that before our insurance would. Uh, the reason you want that is if your insurance company has to defend it, now they're gonna raise your rates and all that. So, you want them to do it first. Um, but I, I think the first thing is if you wish to allow them to, um, to do this, then you need to vote to allow that. And then the second thing is if you wish to require, uh, them to make you an additional insured, you need to give them some amount of time to do that. Now, they can't, I assume they have children to pick up tomorrow and they can't do it before tomorrow morning, but, you know, you'd say within, you know, seven days or something, or ten days, they would, uh, make the district an additional insured and provide a certificate of insurance.
Okay, is there a motion to allow, um, the Annette Bus Line to pick up students at Madison County Central School?
I make the motion to allow them to pick up students at Central.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Bell. Yes, sir.
And just one thing, it, it's just pickup, not drop-off.
It's pickup and drop-off.
Okay, pickup and drop-off.
It's pickup and drop-off.
And it's just Central.
It's just Central.
Okay, so it would need to be pickup and drop-off.
Okay, is there, is there a motion, um, to approve, um, Annette Bus Lines to pick up and drop off on the Central Campus?
I make the motion to, uh, allow, uh, Annette Bus Lines to pick up and drop off at Central.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
By Miss Bell. Okay, any discussion?
Um, is that, that's the only school?
That's the only school I asked about.
Oh, okay, 'cause I know, I know, I, I was in Lee today and I seen them coming in. I mean, I seen their bus go in.
So, Annette Bus go into Lee School?
Yeah, and I don't know, they could've just visited, but that was when we...
You don't visit on a bus.
I mean, I don't know what they were doing, but that's why I ask you, 'cause I seen it.
Well, that was on a...
I didn't see whether they dropped or picked up, but they went in, when school was out.
Okay, you may need to, uh, amend your amendment because I have not been asked about any other location. I'm just trying to make sure that we are covered should everything ha- happen with them. I, I pray nothing happened, but, uh...
I mean, I think we ought to do it.
No one has asked me any questions about Lee.
Well, I, I just think we ought to do it. If we're gonna do it for, I mean, I think they could say...
Your motion.
Whatever.
The teacher that has a child, it would be...
What would you recommend, Ms. Williams?
Um, well, has Annette Bus Lines asked us for this?
They asked us about Madison County Central. They had asked us about Pineda, but they worked that one out, so Pineda is off the table. But they've only asked me about Madison County Central.
And, and Pineda wasn't to pick up children, Pineda was to leave a bus there.
Yes.
At which they found another place, and so that's what I'm thinking. All right, I, what I would do is I would, um, make your motion on whatever they have requested. If they haven't requested Lee, I don't believe I would, uh, jump out there and, and offer Lee.
It might've just been somebody that stopped there for some other reason.
Now, the, the other thing though, I think that, that, and of course Superintendent would be the one that would have to ensure this, is it, we need to make sure that, that this doesn't migrate and evolve now into children getting off that bus and getting on our buses to go to home or go to friends' houses or things like that because the, the charter schools are required to provide transportation. In the past, the way they've done that is contracted with the district and their, their kids did ride our buses. Now, they've chosen not to do that, which is fine. There's no, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but that, that, it would not be right for their kids to ride our buses to go home.
I've got a question. Did you say that the parents were delivering these children to the school?
The parents are coming to work and bringing their child to work.
So, if I'm a teacher, my child gets in my car, rides with me to Central School, then they would get out of my car and get on this bus and go to the charter.
Okay. So, at the time that they're getting on the bus, we've not been responsible for them at that time. Their parents have.
They're on our campus, any town, any one is on our campus, we're responsible to some degree.
But it's not the same, they're not getting them from us, they're getting them from the parent. I know if something happened, we're liable.
Well, like, you know, are they riding another bus? Too senior to get on the charter bus. The parents are bringing them in.
So, if I'm a teacher at Central, my child gets in the car with me, I drive to Central, they get out of my car and they get on this bus to go to the, uh, to the charter school. Now, are, are they technically our responsibility? Well, they're not a student en- enrolled in that school. So, I, I think, and I think the way you'd look at it theoretically would be that it's the parent, that they should be in their parents', uh, uh, they should be, the parents should have them until they get on the bus.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking.
Now, an, an issue that I, and, and again, this was, this has kinda been brought up. I don't know anybody else on planet Earth has ever had to deal with this now, but, um, an issue would be now if I was a teacher and I needed to go to my class and do stuff. Now, who is watching little Johnny go from my class to the Annette Bus Line bus? I don't know the answer to that. Um, does the teacher have to show up at the, at, does the teacher have to accompany their child to the bus stop to watch their child get on the Annette Bus Lines? I don't know the answer to that. Y'all, you know, that's gonna, y'all gonna have to think about that. If you've got a teacher on bus duty, can that teacher not watch their child 'cause the buses are over here and the Annette Bus Line's over there? I hadn't thought all that through. This is all brand-new, okay?
I'm, I'm thinking like Acela, for instance, they have a bus that meets in the Winn-Dixie parking lot.
That's right.
And that's where they pick up the children.
That's right.
So, I mean, maybe Annette can go to the Winn-Dix...
And the greatest thing about that is it does not involve us at all.
It doesn't involve the school and it, and it won't disrupt the teacher in the classroom with their child and, you know. So, that to me makes more sense. It may not be making the teacher happy.
I, I would imagine that you're, there, there are issues with timing, right? Because the teacher has to be there at a certain time. Well, if the charter school is not accepting students prior to that time, they can't really run by the charter school, drop the kid off and get...
That, that might be.
Get the class on time. Um, but, yeah, a little bit of thought has to be given to, now, this isn't our child on our camp, this isn't our student on this campus. And so, that student probably needs to be with their parent the whole time, but now if their parent has duties, I, I, I don't know how that's gonna work. Uh...
I need y'all to understand, this evolved last week, it's quickly evolving, and I need to get part of it to you as quick as possible so we can deal with it. I have not I have not worked out all the details, but I do know the board need to be aware of it and to give me some kind of direction. Now I don't have all, like I said, I don't have all the answers yet, but it's, it's just, it's just evolved.
I don't know how we can vote on something when we don't have all the answers to begin with, you know, it's.
It's only our school has started.
Right.
I know.
What we're voting on, are we going to allow them permission to come on our campus? Now, we can write up criteria that they have to be at a certain area, a certain location. I did move their location for pickup away from our buses, so we won't have to worry about the mingling of the students.
I see, yeah.
I mean, we may could, we may could go ahead and vote on it, and then if we see that it's presenting a problem, then we can come back and address it.
I think you could probably do that, yes, sir.
Again, something may come about that we're not foreseeing to where it's, it's not going to work, and then it may be fine, and there's no problem with it. I think you may just have to see once again school and how it's going.
And the problem's not so much the bus coming on campus, it's the supervision of the children from parent to bus.
Yeah. Well, and, and the supervision by parents who are there to do a job, and their job likely would not allow them to stay right there by the Annette bus.
That's the problem, not that the bus is there.
Right.
How many, how many kids you talking about?
It's at least ten, specifically, I don't know, but I know it's at least ten.
Probably varying ages and.
Yes.
So, so what pleasures the board tonight? Because I do think we need to do something since school is in session.
But, I mean, we have different stipulations, like we've been talking about, you know, they don't know what we're saying here, and if we say it's okay, which.
Well, I mean, I, I, I would think that we may could say it's okay right now, and then get the, see what their plan is, maybe there's a plan for who's going to supervise them.
They may have an aide on the bus that'll get off and go get them.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I.
At the next meeting, I could bring you back more detail, but like I said, I need to get this rolling.
I mean, this, this is the thing, we've now started school.
Mm-hmm.
This was, transportation of these students has been an issue, and they've known they've had this obligation for, ever since last year. I don't think this now becomes an emergency on your part.
Mm-hmm.
If you want to take some time, I think you can do that, if you want to do, if you want to try it for a while and see what happens, I think you can do that, too. But I, I think, I agree with this, you know, and again, it's brand new. But I mean, the, the issue, I think, would be, okay, somebody's got to take charge of those, those children that are not our students while they're on that campus. And now maybe they, you know, but, and, and if the bus is, is, if the bus gets there very early and is sitting there, and there's an aide out front.
Just put them on the bus.
Parents can walk them over and drop them off with the aide and walk back to their classroom, then yeah, that probably doesn't seem like a lot, like a problem, but, you know, a teacher on bus duty on the other side of the campus now has to now send their child to walk across campus to get on a bus, that, that seems like that might be problematic. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, what, what pleasures the board, I mean, what, what do you, what do you want to do?
I'd like a little bit more information. I have no, I don't have a problem with it, but I, I just would like them to know where we stay, you know, maybe Annette, for instance, if they arrive at 7:30, well, the teacher pulls in, there's the bus, get on the bus, no problem. That would be the, it seems like it would work out that way, because that bus has got to get to the school, and they may have to make some other stops in between, so it seems like.
I would think the bus should be there when the teachers get there, and they just go to the bus. I don't know that people should be milling all over the school.
The teacher gets out of her car, walks the child to the bus.
I would like to see the bus there at 7:30.
Or whenever the teachers have to be there, I, I don't know that it's, I mean, again, I don't know what their plan is, but you would think that the ideal plan would be the bus would be there when the parents pull up.
Be there waiting on them.
And then they would just get out of their mama's car and go to the bus, or daddy's car.
Right. Or whoever's car. I would think that would be.
Can we give it like a two-week trial to the next board meeting and then readdress it if there is a period where kids, their children are not supervised? Then that would be, come back to the board because it would be liable.
Do we go ahead and ask for the liability coverage, even if we were not to, decide not to?
I, I, I think you definitely have to do that. I think that, and as Ms. Raynack was telling me, I, I think that's got to be in writing. I think that how, the way I would do that is, I would have a, I would require that they give you a certificate of insurance from their insurance company that lists the school district as a, as an additional insured, so that then we would be able to make a claim on their insurance policy. But I, I would go ahead and require that, and then, and then, yeah, if y'all.
I think an easy way for them, if I was in their shoes, I will have an aide, if there is an aide on the bus, meet me at the school and wa, monitor children, the teachers have to go and just, the aide get on the bus and lights first in the afternoon. That's just a suggestion, I'm not sure.
The parents may have something worked out, where one of the parents watches all of them if they're not on the duty. I don't know, I mean.
Well, it's not our, that's not our weeds to get caught up in, we just need to decide what we will do tonight.
So that's them to work out.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to, do you want to wait to the next meeting? Do we have more definitive information, or do we want to allow them to come and go ahead and ask for the certificate of insurance and liability coverage? I mean, we've got to ask for that if they're allowed to come on campus.
Yeah, what bothers me is that this is at the 11th hour right now, and I mean, this isn't a surprise that they were going to ride the bus.
And, and what was their plan?
Well, it doesn't sound like there's a.
Yeah. Well, what was their plan all summer? I mean, why is this being brought up now?
I'd like to have some communication between the superintendent and Annette Bus Lines, and find out what time they're going to get the bus there, or Creative Arts, yeah.
It's Creative Arts and Annette, and that's my communication, that's why I brought it to you.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is you've had the communication with them?
I mean, they, they asked me about coming in and putting in a bus stop, and so I told them I would need to get to the board, okay? Because we need to have, and by what direction do I need to go to allow them to come on our campus?
Well.
Specifics of it, I, I don't know, because I've never dealt with anything like this, and I was trying to get directions, which way to go.
Well, I, I, I'm sure that they had set up their routes, and I'm sure that they didn't set it up for the Central School, but I'm sure that the parents of those kids, because of they coming to work, I'm sure they, they, they trying to get that. That's what I'm sure of. And, I mean, we need them, we need them, we need them at work.
And, and is the reason they're asking this, because otherwise Creative Arts would have to, would, would have to start accepting children earlier in the day, right?
Right.
Because otherwise, the teachers that are teaching at Central could get up a little earlier, run by Creative Arts, drop the kids off, get the kids to the school. So are we going through all of this just so Creative Arts doesn't have to have people there to watch kids a little bit earlier?
Um, I don't know the answer. Does, I mean, we, we need some guidance so we can move on. Does it pleasure the board for us to wait to the September the 5th meeting to have more, more explanation of what's going to occur? And again, if we can show that there's supervision, then I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have a problem with it, I just would like to know, like, what we're talking about here.
Somebody make a motion already?
No.
No.
Yeah, they're already, the motion was made.
By who?
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, so you probably.
Well, we're, we're in discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, we're in discussion now.
If you want to do something different, you could.
So the motion was made by who, Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Williamson.
Williamson and Ms. Bell, okay. So it's been properly made by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Bell. Okay, now we're having discussion.
Do you want me to amend my?
Well, again, let's.
I mean, if it's the consensus of the board, do we?
Let's discuss and see, how do you feel about it, Ms. Williamson?
I don't have a problem with it, but I, it is a concern about the supervision of the kids, that is a concern.
So you have concern and supervision. Mr. Carroll, what about you?
I, I have, I have zero problem with it. I do, I mean, you know, the, the logistics of where they meet, who's, who's watching them, if they're going to be there, but when, you know, I, I, I'd really like to know that, but I, I do want to, as bad as I hate, I want to accommodate our teachers out there, too, that, that's there, because we sure need them at work, and, you know, so I don't want, I don't.
I mean, I think all of us here want to try to accommodate people, but we need to try to.
But I don't want to, I mean, I don't know.
Liability of not being.
I, I have, I have an issue with voting on something that I don't know.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
What's, what?
Okay, Ms. Gibson, you've expressed.
Have ex, have expressed.
Ms. Bell, how do you feel?
I feel like we should give them the opportunity to try and put the insurance on it.
So try, okay.
Mr. Can we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment. So when we provided the transportation to the charter schools last year, they give supply someone from Creative Arts to supervise the students while they waited for the buses. They sent over a stat member that.
At Central?
Supervise students until they got on the bus to go to Creative Arts.
And, and that person was there, or, they were there the whole time that students were accepted, so.
But those students were getting off various buses, whereas none of these would be getting off buses.
Right. So you have to, when did, when did employees have to get there at 7:30?
Seven thirty, and the buses, I think they're scheduled to be at Central School around 7:35. About approximately 7:30, 7:35.
One of that, that might be an easy way to handle it, would be to say, yeah, we'll allow it, but you got to provide somebody to watch the kids like they did last year, start at 7:30. I like that.
If they did it last time, I'm quite sure they got plans to do that, especially if they had little ones.
But now, we don't know that right now, and I, I think that bus is going to be there early.
I think so, too.
I really do.
They have asked to do it last year.
This year, they do not have any plans as of yet.
I'm talking about what, what Ms. Ms. Hill was saying, that they provided someone there last year.
This year, they do not have any plans as of yet. Now, if we request that, or we require that, they will do it. But right now, they don't.
Well, I think if they want them to do that, I think that's, that'd be a good thing, that they, that somebody has to be there.
And, you know, and I think we need to require that those kids are supervised by someone other than the district employees, every how they want to do that. Somebody on the bus that gets off, somebody that's already there that's there, that's up to them, that's absolutely up to them.
Yeah. And the, yeah, I mean, and, and really, if you think about it, when the, when the teacher gets on campus, now they're, they have job duties and all of that right there, apart from supervising their own child. So they really need somebody to drop that child off with as soon as they get on campus.
And if the bus can get there early, that, that goes straight from parent to the bus, I mean, I don't want to require that they have to have somebody, they can work something else out that works better for themselves.
Okay, we still have a motion on the floor, I don't really know, let's, let's, I guess, take a vote on that motion, and then we can go on to something else.
All right, is it possible to get the information that we need, even if we don't, we don't have to need? They could call us, can't we vote, they can call us and tell us what the information is, and we'll say yea or nay, and next week? Or whenever you get the information?
For the night.
You mean not let them provide transportation tomorrow and tell them they can't do it tomorrow?
Well, if we don't vote, they won't be doing it tomorrow.
All right, how do they do it today?
I think we did a trial run, see was it feasible today. Was it feasible? Uh, it had kinks in it.
What, what were the issues of?
I don't have the details, but it was kinks in it, but they worked, they, they found out, they can work it out. But they did not have anybody from their school out there today.
So that's, if they were going to do it, they would have been there today.
But we did not require that, okay, and that's one of the kinks that we would have to work out to require someone from their school to be there.
Unless that bus was there, if it's, the bus is there at 7:30, the teacher puts them on.
I mean, we can't go on ifs.
No, we don't, we can't go on ifs, you're right.
Or we're going to have children that's unattended.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Bell, to allow them to come on campus. I think we just need to vote on this, and then if we vote it down, then go from there. All those in favor of allowing them tomorrow to go back on campus to pick up and drop off students? If you're in favor of it, show a hand, please.
I want, is that just, just like it is now, not, not with any?
I, I, I don't know that we can stipulate, I mean, the motion was, the motion on the floor is to allow students to be picked up and dropped off at Central School, that's our motion.
Ken, I amend the, my, my motion that we allow the bus to come on campus, because that's not an issue as long as they can, they, they make arrangements that the children are not supervised by us, that they will provide some supervision from parent to bus.
And the insurance, right?
And the insurance, and we get an insurance certificate.
That's next, we've got to get this done first.
So I, I think, yes, ma'am, I think you can amend your motion to say that, if that's agreeable to your second.
So, so say that again, Ms. Williamson, please.
That the bus can drop off and pick up, but they have to assure that they provide supervision for the children from parent to bus.
Okay.
That the parent can walk them to the bus if they get there early enough, if not, they have to have somebody else that can do that.
The charter school has to.
Yes, the charter school.
And, and.
That we wouldn't have to be liable.
And, and that's, I think you thought, you thought through the morning. Now in the afternoon, though, how is that going to work? Because is the, is the bus getting there while teachers are still working?
No, the school was out.
Was well out, okay.
Yes, the, the kids have been dismissed before the afternoon bus gets there. The afternoon bus should get there around 3:30, 3:38.
And then the teacher should pick up the kid from the bus, whoever is.
That's the end, that, they, it's the end of their school day.
So the teacher would be free to leave the classroom and go meet at the bus and pick up the kid?
Yes.
All right.
The only, the only question, okay, that I would have with this is, how do we ensure this happens tomorrow when it's 7:25 tonight?
Yeah.
That's a great question. I think somebody needs to call the principal at the, over there, just.
I'm sure they're missing.
You know, this is how they voted, if, if they wanted to pick them up there, then you've got to have somebody there.
Yeah, and they may work, can do something tomorrow that they might not do all the time, but get it done tomorrow till they get something worked, worked out. Because I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to tell them how to do it, it's just, this has to be done.
Well, and, and you're not, you're telling them how, if, if they wish to use district facilities, what they have to do.
That this is what you have to do, you can, like I say, you can have somebody there, you can, whatever, whatever works out, but it's got to, we can't take that responsibility for children that are not enrolled in our school.
And it might be easier just to have that aide or whoever there at the charter school earlier, right? And have it, and lower those times that you can drop children off there, that might end up being easier, rather than dealing with us.
So, so Ms. Williamson has a motion to, for bus drop off, drop off and pick up with supervision provided by Creative Arts School from parent to bus, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell, okay, discussion.
I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, and if, if they choose not to do that, then there's not a drop off or pick up. If they're saying we're not going to provide supervision, then there's not a drop off.
Unless they can get the bus there early enough and the parents can.
Well, that would be supervision, that's.
Yeah, we wouldn't need that.
Okay, it's been properly made by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Bell. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop. Okay, the next item, is there a motion to require additional, a certification of insured to show liability coverage?
Yes, to require that the district be listed as an additional insured on the, on Annette Bus Line's insurance policy.
Okay.
And provide that certificate to the district.
Okay, is there a motion as such?
I make a motion for whatever you just said.
It's been properly made by Ms. Bell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? If there's none, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, and we left something out with that, what is our timeframe, will be, for this? What would you recommend?
Well, I think, and, and I think what you've said is, and let me make sure, is that they, they don't get to use the Central School tomorrow if they don't have supervision for the kids. And then I think that, so that's your time limit on that one. I think for the certificate of insurance, I think you could give them a few days to, you know, by the end of the week.
Seven days.
I, I would say by the end of this week, I mean, you can get that pretty quickly.
Okay.
I'd like to make a note of something. In the future, I would like to, when something comes up like this regarding another school, I'd like to have a representative here that can answer some questions for us, either from the. Either from the bus or the school, or somebody that knows, you know, what, 'cause it helps us make a decision when we get all the facts. That's just my suggestion.
No, that does need to happen, because we've sat here and gone over this for the past fifteen to twenty minutes, and we don't know.
No, you're exactly right, and I think the issue is, this is the first time charter schools have provided transportation.
I can understand.
And so I think there's a little bit of an excuse for doing that. Now, next year, there won't be such an excuse.
No, no.
You know, that should've been kinda planned out.
I realize that, it's just, it's always nice to have the facts before you make a decision.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion concerning the liability coverage, like?
Time frame?
For the end of this week?
Yeah, I would think you would, and I think the, I would do for both timeframes, that until they have the supervision, they cannot use the Central School. And then, but the liability insurance, they can get that to us by the end of the week.
Okay, is there a motion to approve until they have supervision at Madison County Central School, they cannot use the school site? And that our liability, and that the liability insurance coverage be to the district office, to Ms. Rainick by August the 19th, at the latest? Is there a motion?
Okay, I move to approve the require supervision on the part of Creative Arts at Madison County Central School. Excuse me, and also the liability insurance must be taken care of by August 19th. How's that sound?
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll, any further discussion? Okay, if none, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of supervision must be on campus, and the liability insurance must be presented to Ms. Rainick by August the 19th. Okay, the next item is the English Language Learning Plan by Mr. Gonzalez.
Ms. Rainick will address that.
Okay, well.
Thank you, Ms. Rainick.
There is a requirement that the district has a three-year plan in place for the English Language Learning. It includes how they're going to set up meetings with the parents, how they're going to set like individual learning plans for the students. Our plan has drawn out as of June 3rd, 2022, so it needs to be in place and submitted to the Department of Education as soon as possible, so that we have coverage. Because if you don't have coverage under the plan, then it impacts our FTD, most students more elderly than we have.
We need to get this approved tonight, okay, is there a motion to approve the English Language Learning Plan for the district?
I move to approve the English Learning Language Plan.
Okay, so it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson to approve the English Language Learning Plan for the district, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll, any discussion?
I'll have to get my language in order before I make.
It's properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Carroll, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, show a hand. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for the approval of the English Language Learning Plan for the district. Okay, that concludes our individual items, 6.1, superintended item.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of things, first thing I would like to say, the cookies were provided by Edmonton Company, one of our vendors that we use for skills enrichment. And we have enough for each person, each employee to have at countywide meeting. The second thing, I've given you a live body count by school and by grade for the past couple, since Wednesday of last week. And do we have any questions about this? Okay, we, our enrollment, we will hire, but these are the number of the actual students that have very successful with their presence at each site.
How much, are we lower than we were last year at this time? Yes.
But, and, I mean, I do still think that there could be some people come, I mean, Labor Day is usually the.
Right.
Right.
We're about a hundred less than we were at the beginning of school last year. But we are, we have like four students involved just that are in practice. So we're still, we're still getting folks involved.
Still early in August.
So we'll start being concerned probably in another two weeks if it's on the road.
And the schools are calling the students that's on their roll, that's registered at their school, they're not waiting to two or three weeks down the line. Because a lot of parents told me this morning that they got a call last Friday because they didn't show up at school. So they are, they're looking for the kids right now. Okay, the next thing I have in front of you, Ms. Gibson, I've asked about it, was the assessment schedule for the year. And that's, again, that's a living document, but this is a draft assessment calendar of what we're doing right now. And if you look next week, August 22nd through September 20, September 2nd, we'll first, we're starting our first round of progress monitoring that's hosted by the state. And the second one for September 12th, depending on the type of reports we get from that administration, whether we'll have to do this one or not. Because we really do not want to be doing assessment on top of assessment, but we need to know that we have enough data to successfully monitor our student's growth, academic growth. So any questions about that, and again, this is draft.
All right, and I know it's here someplace, but what, the state is requiring the three main assessments, right? And now, when, you said, was the first one?
That's PM 1, when you see PM 1, on the second page, you see PM 2, and on the third page, you see PM 3. Those right now, those are the dates that's required by the state.
Thank you.
And on the last column, it tells you whether it's mandated by the state or is it district assessment. Okay, any questions? Okay, the other thing that I need to address, some are evaporated from us, and a lot of things that happened since August 1. A whole lot of things that has happened through August 1. On August 1, we had our, we had our board meet. On August 2nd, August 2nd, BSI came in and told us the fate of our schools, that didn't happen until August 2nd at PM. And because of our school grades, we have a school that's rated an F, and there's two schools that's rated a Ds. They're funded, monitored by the state right now. And the school that's an F, in their document, and this is on support from the state, it says that the percentage of instructional personnel assigned to a school with either a rate of unsatisfactory or needs improvement based on their most recent three-year BAM score has to be reassigned. And that's something that I did real quick, because they told me I could wait until September. I thought it would not be fair to the student if I let a teacher start and stay in that classroom a month and then have to move them, because I had to move them, not only from that classroom, I had to move them from the school. And we know when the state gives you mandate, you don't necessarily have to follow it, but if you don't follow, the state takes your money. This district is not in a position to let money go back, okay? And so that's why I had to move quickly, and I had less than a week's time to find a location for those teachers. So they would not go in front of a class, and then next, within a month, I had to move them someplace else. And so that's what was going on in addition to all this other stuff, but we have had successful school openings. The Bureau of School, BROMET, came in, and they will be meeting with us next week. They're gonna have their introductory meeting with Greenville and Pineada and Central. And then the following month, they will be having instructional reviews with each one of the schools. And it's gonna be similar to what the teachers, what the principals did at the beginning of school. And so they've already scheduled that, they've met, the team has met the principals and read at them, and they've sent a sample instructional review of things that they want. And so that's where, and I did get some people to change schools without having to make any.
Involuntary.
Involuntary move, but what we also need to remember, when we recommended employees back, especially teachers, they were recommended to teach for Madison County School system, not a specific site. They were recommended back for a specific job, okay? But other than that, that's where I am with that, and we've had a successful school start.
Good, I have a quick question, when the BSI, when they do come in and make recommendations, could we, as a board, just get an update of like what they're saying to the schools to keep us informed of?
Okay, yes.
Like, whenever they come, if they say that this, this, and this needs to be done, then just as a courtesy, let the board know at the next meeting from the time that they come, so we can. If people in the community were to ask us, how is it looking, then we would have something educated to say to them.
Okay. We'll do it, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Reeves?
Ms. Bishop.
Okay, Ms. Williamson?
I don't have anything except welcome back, everybody. Know that the school year started off well, I heard from somebody that no children were lost.
That's good.
But he's always one that goes to sleep on that bus.
Yeah.
Is that all, Ms. Williamson?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Just one thing, how many vote tech things do we offer? I'm talking about, you know, like, I know Ag is.
We offer six.
Six?
We offer Fang, medical skills, criminal justice, business, robotics, and robotics.
Do some of our kids go to like Taylor Tech?
They do.
For welding and things like that?
What was the last thing?
Do we, do we, do we, do they have to provide their own transportation down there, or do we?
They do.
They have to provide.
They do.
I got you. So we don't have any kind of shop at the high school no more, huh?
We can get students to sign up for it.
Is that right?
Or, or we have the welding equipment, nor the teacher.
Yeah, we can find the teacher.
We tried, we could not find the teacher, all the people to sign up just left.
What'd you say after robotics?
Power and energy is sponsored by Duke Energy.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, I had the pleasure of attending the open houses, and I, all the schools look wonderful, and there's a lot of excitement in the air, and I'm also excited and look forward to a great year, thank you.
Yep, I was able to attend the open houses, and it seemed like everything was going well. I wanna welcome everybody back, and I also wanna thank everybody that came out and helped me in Greenville for the cleanup efforts. I mean, we did a lot of work that day, and now it looks really good to me. I also wanna thank the city of Greenville, Brittany Brown, for assisting us, for getting that whole field in the football field in Greenville also. Thank y'all very much.
Okay, I wanna just wish everybody a great back-to-school year. The countywide meeting was very nice, the lunch was really nice, Ms. Joseph, that was really nice for the staff and for the district. I feel it's been a good start to the school year, all the schools look very nice, Central looked really nice, very clean, they overall look really good. And one thing to remember is, we really sometimes get lost in the, all the confusion, but people do leave Madison and go off and do great things from the high school and different places. So that's the thing we need to remember. I just wanna brag on my older sister, she was named, which is a big honor, we were very proud of her, Principal of the Year for Brevard County. So that's a great honor, and she graduated from the high school out here in 1984, she was a homecoming queen, and went on to FSU and was Principal of the Year in Brevard. She's in the state running for the Florida Principal of the Year, but again, that's someone who graduated from Madison County High School and went on to become a success in South Florida. And the district she's in, just to put it in perspective, they have 71,000 students, that's, that's a lot of students. Fifty-eight elementary schools, seventeen middle, seventeen high schools, and fourteen charter. So again, just because we're small and a small school district, people do graduate from Madison and go on to do things, big things, and make the community proud. So I just wanted to recognize her and her accomplishments, and the best thing about it is, she obviously is a great principal, but she's a great, has been a great school teacher, I mean, for years. She, back in probably '06, we went down, she was in the finalists for Teacher of the Year down there, and I was able to see her on the screen teaching. And she truly is an outstanding teacher, and that's the, that's the best thing, and seeing someone have success is that she was a great teacher to start with, and truly, that is her love. But I just wanted to recognize her and her accomplishments, and again, wish everyone a great rest of the year, and we will be back at the next meeting.
Can I say one more thing, there was a six, the young man that do all, did all the drawings at Central School, I wanna give a shout out to him, he did an amazing job. I think he was sixteen years old, I don't know, remember his name, but he did an amazing job, and I'm very proud of him, you know, he did some good work out there.
Yeah, it was a lot of, it was a lot of work, and that's a lot of tedious work when you start painting murals. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm giving a motion to adjourn.
It's been properly made by Ms. Williamson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for adjournment.